All right, welcome back, everybody. We are gonna start our, continue our briefing now with WSU.
Hi, WSU.
Yes.
How are you guys doing?
Incredible. Has anybody told you you're awesome today?
No, not yet. That's the first time.
We appreciate you.
Those knotweeds are bothering me.
Oh, are they?
No, I'm just excited about it.
Yeah, hopefully. Well, are we, are we running?
We are.
Okay. Good morning, I'm Heidi Steinbach. Good morning to the commissioners and anyone else who is tuning in today. I just have one item to brief on. It is project solicitation through Washington State Department of Agriculture's knotweed control program. We have been receiving WSDA funding to control knotweed since 2013. This funding has been used to survey and treat knotweed on creeks in Mason County and shorelines. The project started with three creeks and we have expanded to include other areas, other creeks and shorelines as we have gained control in project areas. Knotweed is a highly invasive noxious weed. There's four species of knotweed in our area. They all function very similar. Knotweeds will spread quickly. They can outcompete native plants, impact our natural resources, and degrade habitat for important species like salmon. I am going to request $30,000 through this project solicitation. If awarded, this would provide a maximum of $30,000 to be used over 2025 through 2027. This will assist with funding our extra help specialist position as well as facilitate knotweed control in Mason County. So I am asking that we have approval to place this request to submit the proposal for WSDA knotweed control program on the next action agenda for approval. I will open it up to questions, but before I do that, I just wanna briefly go over our work that was completed in 2024. I included a report for each of you, but just to summarize some of it, we treated over 4.2 creek and, or about 4.2 creek and river miles. That's not including sites that were terrestrial sites that weren't along shorelines or creeks. We surveyed over 10 creek and river miles and these treatments were, were done over forty, on forty-two parcels throughout the county. Yes, so now I will open it up to any questions.
Are you still have to paint it and inject it to kill it?
So we, we have not done a lot of injection last year. We injected one site where it was a very large patch that hadn't yet been treated and that was in a terrestrial site. We use injection if it's a very large stand that's either towering over our head and not safe to spray, or we will use injection if there is a risk of off-target damage to native or landscape vegetation. A lot of our sites are at a point now where we don't have to do injection, which is great because injection can be very time-consuming, but it does work very well for large sites.
In the old days, that was what it worked.
Yeah.
You couldn't spray it. It sprayed, didn't work at all. It'd just come back the next year.
Yes, and they have found an herbicide that works very well. We're using Polaris at a lot of our, our sites, but there is still the risk of off-target damage if it's too large. So we still use injection, but most of our sites are at a point where we can spray them. Yeah. So. Oh, yes.
That picture, can you see that one?
That was, yeah, that was us injecting a site in Belfair. That's adjacent to the Theller Wetlands. Yeah. So that was the one.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, so that was one of two or three sites we injected last year. Yeah.
How tall were they?
Oh, um, wow, probably seven feet tall. Yeah.
I'm used to it because I had a cedar mill. Believe it or not, cedar kills everything except for knotweed.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, the lutz seems to love it. And interestingly enough, it can literally grow six inches to a foot in a day.
It grows quickly.
I'm not kidding you. It come out, at first I was doing it as a joke, but you'd go out and you'd measure it and the next day it's literally that much taller. It's like, what the hell? That stuff is amazing.
No, it is amazing. And then what's amazing about it coming up so quick early on in the season is that when it dies, it leaves nothing except for bare canes. And so that's one of the reasons why erosion can increase really bad in areas with knotweed is because it comes up quickly. It outcompetes our native shrubs that hold the shoreline, but then in the winter it dies back, leaving pretty much nothing. So then when you have large rainfall or flooding events, that ground can get scoured away a lot easier. Yeah, so right now, if you go out to look for knotweed, you'll start seeing it come up, but, but usually you'll just see the hollow canes that it leaves behind. Yeah.
Pretty amazing stuff.
Yeah.
But on top of that, one of the things that it likes is you'll have a big patch that's open past it and that will be stinging nettles.
Yes.
That's out there. I came visiting here when I was young. I went run through the, the knotweed in shorts and only to find stinging nettles on the other side. Not a smart move.
Yeah, that's always fun when you're controlling your weeds and then they're surrounded by blackberries or stinging nettles or, yeah, something else.
But I'm very, very supportive. It's great work. I, I can't even imagine what it would be like if you guys weren't doing this stuff every year.
Oh, well, thank you. Yeah. No, I, I appreciate that.
Is there a match associated with this $30,000?
You know, I would have to look. There is, no, not to my knowledge. They encourage match, but, but it's not required. Yeah.
So that may be like in kind in terms of your time.
Yeah, so we use, we usually use like mileage to include a match. Herbicides sometimes, equipment can be used as a match. Our office manager time, we will use as a, a match. Yes.
Let me ask this. If we gave you $5,000 cash match, would that guarantee the?
Um, it would, it would likely bump it in, in the, in the priorities of their, like how they prioritize projects, but this work has been awarded to us for quite a while and so I don't foresee it not getting awarded. I'm, I'm thinking strongly that we will be awarded.
Now, you work with the Salmon-Hassam group to do it?
We are coordinating with them on Mission Creek a little bit. Yes.
Well, they also have those young staff and those other kids that come in if we could expand what you're doing.
That would be good.
Have you considered, I don't think this is going to the canal, uh, uh, coordinating council. Are they still offering any money or can you apply for that as well?
I can look into that. Yeah.
Yeah, ask Mindy and see if, if you can apply for that because get more, more area. Get in front of it more because it's, it's pretty prevalent.
No, that is a good idea. Yeah, I can, I will try to look into that.
So I'm supportive.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any more questions or is that it? Okay. All right, thank you.
Our, our last noxious weed employee was telling me about my kids living through McClearie and so as you're coming into the city of McClearie, you go over a creek and on the right-hand side, if you look down, there is a ton of knotweed along the creek there. And so she was always saying, gosh, I wish that Grace Harbor would go take care of that because they're concerned with the transmission of the weed in the waterway.
It's tricky. So Grace Harbor is working on knotweed. They have so much of it and so they probably ha, like we do, they have their project areas that they're prioritizing. So maybe that's just not on their list yet. Yeah.
I think all the logging helped to move it around. It gave a foothold everywhere because it does travel. The bees love it. It's, it gets traveled everywhere. Good windstorm and it goes.
Yeah, it spreads around in material a lot. If it gets on a roadside and it gets mowed, that's how it spreads around, along creeks. Either landowners will mow it. I've seen beavers cut it. Flooding events can move it.
I've never seen that. I've never seen beavers go. So it makes sense.
Yeah, there, there's a variety of ways that can, can move around. Yeah. But, um, thank you. Okay. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Public health?
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy Monday.
Happy Monday to you too. How are you? I think, um, Community Lifeline's first.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So the last in our provider presentations, we have Erin Martin Nash.
Martinak.
Martinak.
They get the knack and Martinak.
Uh, Martinak, who is the board chair for Community Lifeline. And it looks like that you're already connected.
I am. I'm connected.
Oh, you are.
Wanna try to share a screen, right?
Yes. Sometimes there's a little bit of a delay. There you go.
And. Let's see. Let me find it. Yeah. Okay, so, um, I am, I know I've spoken kind of virtually to you before and, um, I'm not sure how historical you want me to be and so you can ask me any questions all the way through this. And also, I'm just gonna give you some background information. So, and this is about the building. So we purchased the building about eight or nine years ago from St. David's and it was mostly done through community grassroots money raising. And so at that point, there was, it was all volunteer and Barb Wiza then was executive director and it was all volunteer, including some of the, um, the residents, the guests, worked there as staff as well as being guests. So when COVID came, we got much more money, right? And, and you guys know that, um, the county, and you were here during that. So, um, the county and we worked together to house people, especially homeless with COVID. And from that money came money to hire the new executive director and there became staff and paid staff and executive director, a finance bookkeeper and a shelter manager. So then, um, COVID went away, right? And the money really went away. So we are now, our current staffing, we operate from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM and we have four part-time overnight shelter staff. We have two case managers who are supported by a different grant, along with pa, part-time janitorial and, um, a bookkeeper who is not supported by grants at this time. So, um, we have capacity to serve 54 and that was part of our 2163 grant with the county. That was one of our conditions or agreements. Until recently, we've been serving 32 and then currently we went down to 15 because we had to decrease our capacity so that it matched more closely the money that we got from grants. So I just wanted to talk about our shelter staff a little bit. They're very dedicated. They've been through us through thick and thin and deal with problematic behaviors a lot at night. People who are addicted, people who are mentally ill, people who don't have the capacity to create their own housing situation. And so sometimes it's, it's hairy. So we have one shelter staff each night for 15 guests. And that is a city limit imposed by the city, but also it's for safety and I can't imagine being one person with 15 adults who are struggling. Some of them are elderly and disabled. And so our case managers are available during the day to help them. So this is the staffing schedule. So I don't know if you guys just got a picture in your minds or if this is helpful, but, um, so 12 hours, seven days a week, so equalling 84 hours a week for staff. And so, um, so we also have HUD management, HUD case management, supported by a HUD grant. So, um, and that's really where changes are being made. We have currently 16 people enrolled in case management and there are two case managers in the last year. Two were accepted in clean and sober housing. So it's really tricky. We can suggest something to someone and they can think it's an okay idea or we talk them or convince them or gain their trust over time and then apply to a facility or apply to a housing program. And so it is, um, there's a lot of hours and a lot of time and, you know, either convincing someone that, yeah, things can be different. And then talking to, excuse me, um, a facility or a program and getting someone accepted or if there's openings. So, um, so, thanks. Uh, so there have been six referred to long-term care and that's like supportive services, housing and services for elderly and disabled. Six have been referred and two have entered. In fact, there was one gal, I'm sure you've all seen her, that used to sit in front. And she used to work for the shelter. She told me she worked, she's been there eight years and just through coordination with DSHS is now an adult family home in Lacey and she's been there for three weeks. And, um, one of the reasons she didn't wanna go and a lot of people don't wanna go is that when you go into adult family homes or assisted living, they take your money, all except $100. And so that inspires fear, especially in people who have trauma historically is that they don't feel safe. If someone else has control of my money and I only get $100, I don't know if I'm gonna be okay. So it's really, it was hard to talk her into it. Took eight years, but she's there and she's still there. So, um, this, and I have a slide on this, but this, but it takes a lot of time and building rapport and building trust for people to give up their freedom because that's the thing that they have when they are houseless, right? They have freedom. So supportive housing is permanent housing with case management, so helping people kind of transition from homelessness to, to being housed. So seven have been offered and six have entered. So many have been referred to treatment. We talk about it every day to those who are using or addicted. And so far in the last year, 10 have entered inpatient AOD treatment, alcohol and other drug treatment. So, um, again, you guys can interrupt me anytime. So as I said before, case management and support is a lot about just connecting with people, getting to know them so, and building ritual, rapport and trust with them. And the way that we do this is be consistent, be reliable, be accountable, be people of our word so that they know that we can be trusted. Also, at Community Lifeline is the shower program. So showers are offered to the nightly guests between the hours of eight and 10. And also during the day on Monday, Wednesday and Friday, people can sign up to get showers and we have volunteers who, who host that and facilitate that. And that can also be true. If we have somebody who is medically unstable, mentally unstable, using drugs, they can camp out in the shower or the bathroom and, and that becomes a process. So I'm really grateful to our staff and to our volunteers for navigating the difficult situations that inevitably occur. We also continue to have a dinner program. Dinners are served six nights a week. Usually 50 to 60 people a night come and eat dinner and different groups and churches support that. Gosembi has a night, I think, weekly and I think Big Crazy Love has a night weekly that they do. So, um, that program is appreciated and going strong. So our board, we currently have five people on the board. It has also grown and, and shrunk over the years since COVID. We're all re, we're all volunteer, mostly retired people. And really what we have in common is that we are moved to do something about the, the homeless in, in Mason County. So our strengths, our dedicated staff. We have a new bookkeeper. Melissa and I have talked a lot over the past couple of years about the need for a new bookkeeper and so on January 1st, she started and she is nonprofit certified. So she is kind of mostly helping us see what the situation is. I think in the past, it's been, we need to, we as the shelter need to look like we are, have our act together and are, are working within our means when it wasn't, it wasn't true. We are, well, that's the next slide. We are, we are in debt because of the well-meaning actions of past administrators.
How much?
So, $300,000 to the federal government. Because, I'll, I'll just skip. We have lots of strengths. I'll skip. To the struggles, I'll go back. So, uh, so I put 280 here to the federal government. We are also in debt to the state government because of not paying our L and I or unemployed, unemployment. And so the decision was made and I can, I can say, I'm not throwing anyone under the bus and this is before me, that the decisions were made to pay staff or to pay other bills and not to pay the government, the, um, the taxes. So now currently we're reaping the benefits of that.
Do you have a total, a total cost?
Around $400,000.
Around $400.
Yeah. So the plan is we need to sell our building. We own our building and so we need to sell our building. Thank God we own our building. So also, um, so, and we have, it's not, it's not a case of we haven't been looking for money or writing grants. But there are things like, um, we requested the NOFO funds recently from the county and were denied because we're being sanctioned by the county because of fund behavior in the past. And so we weren't able to get money from that notice of funding. So what we're doing is working against really actions of the past. So we have two grants now. One is the 2163 from Commerce through Public Health, which covers the two full-time employees or four part-time employees of the overnight shelter. We also have the federal HUD grant, which supports up to three case managers and we have two right now. So we don't, what we don't have is funding to cover the cost of the facility. So this is the financial status. I have one in, one paper.
If I can see it for one minute.
Oh, yeah. So, um, sorry that I only brought that one. I don't, I don't even think I can make this bigger, but, um, so essentially what we have funded is the shelter aids by the 2163 grant as, um, and the case managers by the HUD grant. What is not funded is the, um, we pay $1,000 a month for water sewer, $1,000 a month for garbage. We pay $900 a month. Whoa, let me see. There. I can do a little bit there. $900 a month for PUD, $285 for HUD Canal as well as subscriptions. We pay almost $1,700 a month for liability insurance, $1,200 a month for bookkeeping and that is a gift. She does many hours volunteer. We're very lucky to have found her. And, um, $1,200 a month in grant management. We haven't been able to pay for our grant manager or grant writer because we don't have the money and so those are non-essential items and so we just lost our grant manager and we owe her thousands of money, thousands of dollars. So it is, this is not a money-making scheme for anyone. What we're trying to do is support the unhoused. I'll pass it.
Oh, thank you.
And, and it's, um, not many want to support people that they see hanging around town that are probably using drugs, that are often belligerent or angry or defensive. And yet, here we are. So the ask is, and I, I wrote a letter to Dave that I think he presented two weeks ago at your meeting.
Coming back to it next week.
Oh, coming back to it next week. Okay. And so this is the ask. So $25,000 each month over the next three months to keep the shelter open. And so the plan is after three months that, um, we are currently about to start writing the, the new 2163 grant. I don't know how eligible we will be for that grant if we were denied the NOFO funds. Because we are in corrective action with the county, I don't know how eligible we'll be for that grant.
So we'll have to talk that through.
Okay.
We'll have to ask Tim.
One of the corrective actions is we, there were three and we have achieved one. One is getting the, um, the policies and procedures to a point where it is agreeable or passes muster maybe. And so we are, I think that the current standstill is that we have people wait outside to get in and, um, and that, there was a question from Todd about if that was, um, trauma sensitive. And so what we're doing right now is talking to other shelters to see what their process is. And the other one is submitting perfect or error-free invoices for reimbursement about the, the FTEs, the overnight staff so that, um, we can be reimbursed from that 2163 grant. So, um, it is, the goal is six error-free invoices in a row and we've maybe gotten two. And we blamed our past bookkeeper, but it's also complicated and, and, um, and a lot of pages. And, and our staff is, um, not, they're not really, they, they make out their time card and then we have to, and then we have to amend it or somebody calls in sick and so they have to come in and we have to change it. And so it's complicated and I'm a social worker, uh, so I try to leave that to the bookkeeper and, and yet I'm learning so much. If, if I had to pay for the education that I've received over the past 16, 18 months, I wouldn't be able to afford it. I, I know a lot more now than I did when I walked into the situation.
I have heard in that, the amount of paperwork and the amount of reconciliation is, is difficult for, for our nonprofit.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, through the county. So that's something that we need to look at.
Any questions, comments, concerns? I know there's a lot of concern.
Yeah. So the alcohol and other drugs, where do they go for that treatment?
There are two, actually two treatment centers in town. And then we, they can go anywhere. We actually have money from that HUD grant to help people to transport to other places too. So really, um, there's a detox in Tacoma and then a detox in the southern part of Thurston County. So, um, they can work with either of the, the alcohol and other drug treatment centers in town to get a bed out of town, either in town or out of town.
Okay. So many questions, but, yeah, but we can meet after, or not after the meeting, but.
Again?
We'll reach out and, yeah, I'll reach out.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for letting me be here and talk about it.
Just put things together right in line.
Okay.
So a lot, a lot to think about and follow.
Yes. Yeah. I call it my shelter problem because I'm always thinking about it, right?
Yeah. Right?
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you wanna hold on to this?
I would.
Oh, oh, sorry. There's my dog. Isn't she cute? Now I have to stop sharing. How do I stop sharing? Oh, my gosh. All right. No, not there.
That's what I created, but I don't know. I didn't.
Here, stop sharing.
Thank you for presenting and making this honest. Joined at a very difficult time.
I really did. I kinda backed into it. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm on the attorney's point board.
That's right.
And so understand how finances are very important to keep the doors open.
Yes.
And staff is. And staff is critical to.
Should I back up?
I think I have two more items, I have two more, so, um, the next item I have is two contract amendments. Um, for the consolidated homeless grant supplemental funds that we released through a request for quote, uh. Few months ago, um, I have two amendments, one is for crossroads housing and the other is for. Shelton Family Center or Youth Connection and they're both for eviction prevention programming, um, and it will serve. Fifteen more households for each agency, so. Um, a few more brackets around the scope of work on that is we also have a contract, um, directly with the dispute resolution center. Which, um, is used for conciliation mediation for if, if, if there's a way to avoid the homeless crisis response system, we'd like to do that. So, um, there's some scope of work in there that kind of in, in ensures that the agencies are partnering with the dispute resolution center as well. Um, but the funding for both agencies, as I mentioned, would be for fifteen more households, um, to keep people housed. Um, and then I think for Shelton Family Center, there's also some facility support dollars in there as well to replace beds and bedding and things like that. So would ask for this to move forward on the next.
Where did we come up with the pricing on these beds?
Um, this was a quote that was provided to us from the agency, so they did like a cost comparison and they provided it in their proposal. Is there a question about the? We can follow up on that if you'd like to amend the amounts.
Maybe just reach out to them and ask them how they. How they, uh, determine more documentation, sure.
Yeah, but I, I absolutely support what we're doing here. Uh, but just maybe clarify on that. And then, uh, I think, yeah, last item is gonna be a news release, uh, that we'd like to bring to the next action agenda as well. Um, for, uh, the next biennium twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-seven, request for proposal for our homeless response grant fund. So whole new, uh, biennium for our homeless response system. Getting all those proposals to select the service providers for emergency shelter, uh, rental assistance, housing and essential needs. Coordinated entry, um, all of those things. Yes. Any questions about that item?
Great, okay.
That is all I've got, thank you.
All right, Dave, next day.
Next thing. Healthcare Authority, uh, reentry demonstration project, sheriff's office has requested that I, um, come to the commission. Um, really, excuse me, uh, last year the commission asked me to go ahead and put in for this grant. Uh, and we've been running through this for about a year and sheriff's office just feels like they don't have the. Facility or the staffing or the.
The necessary items to.
Necessary items to carry it through, so, um, they've asked me to coordinate the withdrawal from the reentry program. And so that's why I'm here is to do that piece, I did do a little research. Uh, Mark asked me to, to look at the facilities that are doing it, those facilities that aren't doing it, and then I, I did this. Um, okay, in our region, we've got, um, Lewis and Thurston are not. Grace Harbor, uh, Wakayakam are, Kitsap is, Pierce is not. And there's a couple of tribal ones, it typ- it depends on the tribe, some do, some don't, the squally I think is moving forward, uh, others are not. Um, the other piece to, to think in a- around this is, uh, the. Turbines is going on with the Medicaid discussion at the federal level. And, and what, um, and what's gonna happen with Medicaid Transformation Project two-point-O? Which is what we're in right now, which allowed, it's a, it's a budget, it's a budget neutral. And they take money from Medicaid services into other places that should save the Medicaid system money. But we don't know what's gonna happen with the, with the two-point-O project at this point, so, um. And that's kinda where we're standing, the sheriff's office has asked to be rolled back out of that. Okay, we'll put that on the action agenda for next week, okay, all right, and the last thing is the easiest thing, um, so. What's that?
This one disturbs me.
So our building up at, uh, at twenty-three hundred Katie, uh, which we moved into this last year, I notified Eric. Uh, at the hospital first of the year of our intent to, to renew the contract and then had a discussion with him on Thursday. Uh, kinda outlined what their expectations are, basically he said they have no need for the building within five to ten years minimum. And may not then because what they're trying to grow, the campus might not be growing that direction, may grow a different direction. So, um, basically he said he just wanted to carry on our partnership, uh, there's no requirements. Um, so the, the letter is all he needed to start the, uh, contract renewal. So it's very simple and then we'll, you know, just get together and get the new contract, so we did it this time for, I, I'm going to ask for one year. And a one-year addition to that, so we'll have a two-year instead of just a single year.
Pretty simple, I'm almost scared of it to be honest, it's too simple, it's never, never a good thing, but let's, let's roll with it.
Yeah, so yeah, it's, it's a great partnership, the hospital has been amazing with this and they've done some, um. Uh, upgrades to the building and the, and the landscaping is amazing and.
Our facilities did quite a bit up there too, didn't they?
Yep, our facilities did, the whole inside, our facilities did. So basically they're taking care of the outside and then any maintenance or repairs that go over five hundred dollars from this point. Then, then the hospital will take care of those, so we've got a couple pieces of sidewalk, we, we're gonna need to get.
Where the trees?
Where the trees, right, so we're gonna have to pull that sidewalk up, cut the tree roots and put the sidewalk back in because that's our handicap and, um.
And how does that? I mean, the structure, the stability of the, of the tree, if you cut the root.
I can, well, I'll have to coordinate that with the hospital guy and he'll have an arborist that comes out and looks at that.
Just don't let the tree fall on our handicap folks.
No, no, but, but right now our handicap is really not. If you can navigate that, they should probably take your blue sticker back. Cause it's pretty rough.
So how many of the staff go to the hospital for lunch?
We go about twice a day, but it's closed, we're gonna starve until June.
And they're closing for three months while they put in a new MRI upstairs of.
I just started going to the doctor for all these years, I haven't fored to go and have lunch.
Prime rib every Friday.
And our hospital would, would be one of the, one of the good eateries.
Eateries, yeah, exactly, and then other than that, um, I am in Montana the end of the week. So I'll be back next Monday.
Okay.
So, and I, uh, we did have quite a discussion with Wasalfo on. Seemed like all day Friday, on finances, on the Senate and House budgets, changes to those budgets, what we see coming forward. And pretty much you're in agreement, they were probably gonna see a special session of some kinds of some length.
That's what I'm hearing.
So.
Yeah, that's what I saw over the weekend.
Yeah.
Apparently they didn't provide what our government person would like to see, so.
Right.
No, no agreement there.
And then I've got a meeting at lunchtime with, uh, WAC on the federal public health funding update. So that may change the complexion of everything, so.
Yeah, 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 when I saw that, I thought, oh, you would be a good one to have on that one, um, well. Let's try to be done by noon today so that we can.
Yeah.
All be on that.
Yeah, it's, and, and it, and it may address what's gonna happen with Medicaid and, cause there's a lot of concern out there. Um, with, with hospitals, especially hospitals and clinics, uh, F Q H C, so we've got P C H S. In the north end, we've got our hospital here, what's gonna happen with Medicaid funding and reimbursement rates? And how, how long can you go with, without bringing re- reimbursement rates up? Um, so, I mean, Eric and I had quite a discussion about that, so the hospital is, is concerned and passed their concerns on to me to, to watch that stuff, so. Um, we.
Could potentially affect our T M B H A S O also.
Yes, right.
So they're the ones that provide.
What's that acronym?
Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Associate Service Organization.
Behavioral Health, yeah.
So they, they provide mental health services, so they do quite a bit of work in our jail, uh, currently, they actually have. A whole structure for doing Medicaid billing, um, and then they also provide services outside of jail also.
Yeah.
Crisis.
Right.
It's a paths committee, right? Paths committee?
It is paths, correct.
So, and I did have a long conversation with J P this week at Choice. Uh, to look at the pathways model that Choice is paying for. How does it relate to the coordinated entry program that basically we're paying for? And to make sure that there's not a duplication or cross billing of efforts, so, um. There'll be some interesting audits going on over the summer.
As there should be.
Yeah, just letting everybody have a heads up, so.
As there should be.
That's all I've got.
Got anything for? I have just one thing, and, and it's, I'm dreaming about this, so it's gotta be affecting me, um. The only thing that we do for the Housing Authority is to appoint the board, but we also approved for our staff to go to their meetings and take minutes, right?
And I don't think we've been.
We have. Yeah, absolutely have, but I. Housing Authority, the reason I'm bringing this up is, um, I was provided video of their last meeting. I'm concerned for our staff, what they do as a board is their responsibility, not ours. But we do have a responsibility to our staff to not have to hear what's going on there. So if they keep this up, it would be my suggestion that they record their meetings and then send it to our staff. And then our staff can then transcribe it.
I haven't seen anything, can we ask our staff if, uh, if they feel safe?
I have, and she's, she is concerned with the nature of the board meetings.
Okay, but does she feel safe, I'm a simple man, if she doesn't feel safe, that we have to do something about it immediately, there's not a.
There's a difference between feeling safe and having to hear irritated voices and conflict between the board members, it's not. If, if our staff doesn't have to be in there for that, they could fight all they want, I don't care, but. Well, I do care because they're critical, but I, it's our responsibility to keep our staff. Comfortable or, and, and safe, in my opinion.
I don't think I wanna watch the video, just like listen to what I'm hearing, but, uh.
Yeah, um, I, I've heard some interesting descriptions, but.
Yeah, so if you could just maybe ask her if she feels safe and, and if, if she wants to.
Do it remotely?
Yeah, then that's, that's fine. Now we're providing the spot also, the space, we're providing the space as well, right?
That's been going on for years and years, uh, we haven't, we didn't have staff for a long time. Uh, we used to when I first came here, but I'm one of those that, again, that's not our responsibility and we were paying a lot at the time.
And we were paying for a executive director that could be responsible for doing that piece.
In the past.
Yeah, that was fifty-five thousand, just at the start, that they covered themselves, and I think they did do it at their point, we pulled it. So I think they did.
So we're back to kinda where we were nine years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, we shouldn't be paying for executive directors.
All right, I will, I'll ask the question, I'll get, I'll have you answer this afternoon.
Yeah, I'll say, if there's a safety aspect, uh.
Safety comes in all forms, if she's not comfortable.
Well, literally just the answer, if the answer is I don't feel safe, that's good enough for me, I'm not, I don't wanna let it get gated, I don't wanna. Go over all that stuff.
That's our only responsibility, so.
Okay, will do. Okay, super.
Until after the virtual assembly, then we'll probably need to talk again.
Yeah, yeah, so, and I've got negotiations this afternoon, but I think after three o'clock.
Sue tomorrow.
News tomorrow, we got all day tomorrow, okay, all right, sounds good, well, yeah. Exactly, yeah.
So they record this on Zoom, how do they record?
Thank you guys.
Were turned off, just saying.
So was that song, uh, that was played, it said in the summertime? I think it was your phone that went, right? Yeah. I think it was the song, in the summertime.
Was it my phone? I think it was telling me it's time for briefing. And then I turned it down. I appreciate that. Yeah, I got rid of my watch, cause my watch went off and it started, I don't know, I could hear people walking and talking and it was like.
It was weird.
Weird, so I took my phone off, I'm not gonna have it.
They are tracking you.
They are, not anymore, now they could track me in my, in the bathroom.
And she was shocked, she was sitting there and she didn't know what to do, how to turn it off.
Kept pushing buttons and I wasn't, anyway.
It was odd, cause it wasn't something normal. It was as though somebody had actually tapped into her phone.
Yeah, interesting, yeah, like I still use walkie-talkies at home and every once in a while you could hear other people. And I'm like, oh, other people. And that's what it was, yeah, it's like on, on the same, I don't know, anyway, hello.
Okay, this is, um, similar to what I brought last time, the last one was a, um, climate element contract amendment. And this is the periodic update grant contract amendment, so same thing, their, the overall budget, um, is the same. It's just, um, the amounts per deliverable have been amended to match up with how, how we're progressing with actual work. Um, so we're just asking to put it on the agenda for the fifteenth, um, for approval for signature.
Sounds difficult. The next one's difficult.
How are you doing, uh, could you have a quick one-minute update through the commissioners on how your. PAC is progressing?
Um, we're progressing a little slower than, uh, wanted, but that's, that's not just the PAC, you know, that's the, on the contractor side too. Um, sometimes we'll schedule things and we'll end up having to drop one of them because something's not quite filled in to. To our liking, um, we might need to go out for more information, so the meeting that's coming up this April fourteenth is gonna be utilities. It was original capital facilities and utilities, but we need some more information from our public works department and some other districts to fill in a couple areas. Um, so we're moving, I mean, we're moving along, um, we've just had to up our amount of meetings to try to take care of it. So it's kind of like, we're making people work a little bit harder to.
We had to do that during the, uh, Shorewind Conference a plan years ago.
Last meeting I went to, Kel said we were gonna get out at seven and we got out at nine.
Better than ten.
Till eleven, so that was not fun. But what, we have transportation, capital facilities and climate.
Yep.
After the utilities, um, that we haven't seen yet, that we'll see and the other ones, um, we have seen, but. Um, we've gotten some revisions from PAC members and public that will send back to S C J. Well, we, we have been sending them back to S C J, so, um, right now we're working on the revisions to the housing.
I know we pay contractor, but can we step in front, get some of it and just do it? I wasn't as a press, I'm sorry, I went to that one in Belfair and, uh. I have a feeling that you should be leading a little more than, yeah.
Hindsight.
Just my two cents, but.
There, um, we are, Marissa does a lot of work in-house and we are now just looking at the technical pieces where we. Her and I together don't have, you know, the technical skills, so we are relying on Loretta's team as well to help us get information for that capital facilities plan and.
Well, if you need help with motivating folks, let us know.
Okay.
Well, it also is kind of also having a common understanding of the level of detail that we wanna put in these plans, so I will, April fourteenth. Is the one for utilities?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make sure and try and make it to that one, so.
I think Pat's been going to the right.
He has, he was at the last one I went to, so, so that's next Monday, oh, good.
Thank you. That's tough.
You guys do a great job.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And we are reminding that we are just meeting the state minimum standards for our. For each element, so there are checklists that the.
Yeah, those are required, so.
That we go through and just confirm that we are meeting those standards.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
The next one is our. Here we do two all-day, all-staff meetings per year, and so our May. Our May meeting, May sixth, we're requesting to have May sixth. Community Development Department closed for the day and we will be meeting in our office. And just continue with our all-staff training, so in the mornings, we spend the time together, go over things as a group. And then in the afternoon, we've been breaking out with, you know, building and planning it, getting together, permit center and building, permit center and planning, you know, whatever that the teams need to work on, and sometimes we invite Environmental Health Department, it looks like. On this one, that our planning and EH may be getting together.
That's cool.
And so we're doing that and then it's our fourth annual Mac and Cheese Off. Yeah. I know, we have a trophy that's. The coveted trophy. The Todd won last time, so it's, it's now in no man's land, so.
Open competition.
Open competition. So just requesting that we would. You know, we'll do, we do signage and website, phones, that sort of thing, and.
And you let our receptionist know.
Yeah, and then, but, the, yep. Well, that Raven, no, is Raven still in that?
She's captain.
Well, she's.
Or cap.
She's.
Or cap carry, yeah, okay, technically, yeah, so she's gotten, okay, good, yeah.
Just so you know, she can step in as Diane sometimes, she has that much knowledge and experience with the county over all the years, just so you know.
She's great, yeah.
Yeah, she's awesome.
And she's not afraid to share her.
Good, okay, nevermind.
Yeah, I love her, she's awesome.
All right, that's it, I, oh, I did wanna let you know, I will be back with Josh Luck and maybe Jeannie on the twenty-first to do our quarterly update, and I was gonna do that for today, but Josh is out the next two mon, today and next Monday, so we're gonna do it on the twenty-first.
Okay. Awesome.
Yeah.
And maybe. Or if I'm getting another builders meeting? Like we did before, when was the last one?
Well, we just went over at OMB and you were there.
Yeah, but they're having another one, I thought, right now, or just.
For Mason County?
Yeah, they say it was this week or last week or.
Is it this week? I don't think it's on.
Josh told us the last time.
But it's, we, regular and either, yeah, typically Josh and or myself are go, attend those. So we had another morning meeting recently that went.
Let us know when, cuz this way you can go, I'll stay back, or we'll play around, we wanna make sure to have somebody there, so we didn't last.
Are you talking about our five AM meeting with the contractors now?
It was a five AM.
Not that one, the one that we went to, that was like a normal hour.
Yeah.
Five AM.
There was one about a year ago.
That's the one that I did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was early.
And that's okay.
Energy code update, Josh really did an amazing job.
Yeah.
It was so good.
Talking with the contractors, helping them communicate with each other and share ideas and it was really beneficial.
It was a very good meeting.
Heard a lot of positive feedback too from contractors, so.
And working with the EDC, I think is 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 great also because then Mike Gill. Can share his.
Super nice about providing us space to have the meeting and actually brought like a little breakfast or something last night.
Yes.
Yeah, Monica.
Yes. That's burritos. All right.
All right, services, you ready? Mackenzie, you got your items?
Thank you, Kel.
Thank you.
You stop buying on me now.
Okay. Sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just two quick news releases, one for the Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging, we have an opening. And then the Housing Authority has two openings, so I was hoping to post those on the next agenda.
I'm good.
See what we can do.
Just so you know, I did try to reach out, he asked for me to reach out because I voted in favor of him, but he never returned my call. The one we approved the last time, yeah.
Oh, Mackenzie.
I did try.
Mackenzie reached out.
I know, I just meant, but he reached out.
He wanted to talk to Randy also.
Yeah, and it said that there was a problem, I didn't have a problem, but he reached out.
I'm not worried about it.
Didn't return a phone call.
Not worried about it. Okay. Are you gonna read them next Tuesday?
Oh, I was gonna let Mark.
We'll see.
I think we should have Winter read them, just because I can try. Okay. Next. Career Fair.
Yes, so Mason County hosted its first Career Fair March thirteenth of this year, obviously to promote promotional and hiring opportunities within the county connecting with job seekers in our local community and then the surrounding areas as well. And I really just wanna give Winter and Megan some huge, like, shout-outs, support, they really put this franchise together, they went to other counties and did research and how it should look, what did we need, I really was just told what to do, to buy, and so they really were in charge of this and did an amazing job, and so. Uh, Winter put together this amazing report for us about how many departments we had in attendance, which was twelve, she has them listed there. About fifty-ish attendees, twelve positions that were promoted, got some tentative interviews that were scheduled, some resumes were put on file. Definitely some engagement, and we've been out at, by we, I mean, the amazing team here, has been out at WorkSource and conducting these workshops still that we had talked about last year with resume writing and interviewing and how to get into NeoGov and all of those things, and so I think the engagement in the community is starting to pay off. And I think this is one of the examples of how how it's being demonstrated. And then we have some really great ideas for next time, I think we should definitely do this annually, I don't think it was a huge impact, we already have a very robust budget, you know, for this type of recruitment, cuz we know that recruitment's huge right now. And so I think that a couple of the things that are worth mentioning were definitely having a broader representation from the entire county, a lot of departments participated, but I know it's really hard to get people out there and especially for the entry-level positions, people are interested coming in and, you know, wanting to learn more about the county, how do I get into the county? How do I start a career path with the county, and so having everyone that that can come, come. Definitely two representatives per department, again, I know that's a big ask, but that way you have some rotations, we could go take a break and that kind of thing, because they wanna talk to whoever's in the position working or in that department, right, we can only sell so much, we need an actual person there, so just like when we go to the Career Fairs, the Sheriff's Office or Corrections, they wanna see someone in a uniform, right? We're not as exciting, we're not in uniform, so, and we definitely wanna make sure that we're reaching out into our bilingual and underserved communities as well. So really, we're starting to look at how do we make our materials into, you know, whatever language we feel like is going to be the most appropriate, depending on the area, and really trying to reach out to some under, different talent pipelines potentially.
When you were establishing your count, what was that based on, walking in the door, signing, all the people there, what should we?
Signing in.
Including the the people that are there or just new people walking in?
Just new people walking in. There were a couple, that were missed, but.
Could we do one up north?
Yeah, in the hub, you'd be able to pull people from Kitsap County.
Yeah, I think we had kind of talked about that, so we do have North Mason High School coming up, which is huge.
But the problem that you have, just like here, is the facility and where it's located, it does make a difference. And the high school up there is a nice big facility, but again, it's off the beaten path, it's just not a. A simple accessible one, put a road, put a sign down on the road at the intersection, go this way and you're there.
If it's nice weather, do it up at the fire station, maybe.
Ooh, you think Chief Bachman would let us?
We have.
Well, we are right next door.
Oh, okay, I say, or we could like, you know, put the, hey, if we pull the fire truck out for us, like, we're not gonna compete with you, but.
However.
However, just talk to us, not to the fire department.
And we could use the Emergency Operations Center, it's a training center, so that would get people.
An idea.
Look at the job and the center itself, to be able to promote them both.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, I think that'd be a great idea, especially, like you said, kind of tapping into South Kitsap and from our town a little bit. Be really good. So, and also in addition to this, obviously still participating in other workshops and events as they come up and career fairs and trying to get out as much as possible, we're gonna be at the Byte. Of, so we're gonna be up there, we're gonna do Oyster Fest, Forest Festival, we're gonna do all the things we normally do and get out there, so if there are other events that you think would be great for us to be at or recruitment opportunities that you're seeing, just let us know, and I get forwards and I'm like, oh, yep, yep, we got that one, or, oh, no, we didn't know about that one, so those are really helpful, I appreciate when those come through.
Yeah. Yeah, that's cool.
So.
Good job.
Nice one, Winter.
Would you give away candy at your desk?
Yes.
Yeah, there's some pictures in the packet too.
I was gonna say, being sweet. Yes, exactly.
Yep.
Very cool. Yeah, this is exciting, that we're really getting out there, it shows that Mason County's engaged. Yes. Yeah, so thank you. Okay, next one?
Oh, sorry.
Staring at you.
I'm putting those pictures.
I've submitted to you for review our portion of the state's requirement for the compensation board. It is a, a board that's established for search and rescue for damages to equipment and injuries, that's over two thousand dollars. We have to convene a board with specific positions within the county, the challenge we have is we don't have an emergency services director. So we had to go out to the EMS council, who is by definition, Mason County's EMS council is the emergency services piece for us. I'm not sure where they are yet, but I have to convene the board within a specific time once a claim is submitted. So they'll either attend or they won't, I guess, so what I've submitted to you is ask for your approval in the compensation board, because there are positions, elected positions that need to sit on the board as well.
So on this board, is this something new?
No, we, it's actually been around for years, we just haven't had anything whi- which says, hey, this is how we're going to do it, which is now that we're having more claims, it's important that we have our process in place.
Okay, yeah, cuz it's funny, I was looking through our committees and nowhere did I find this one, so. I was like, huh. Very interesting. Okay, so you're saying that on this board, it would be. I'm gonna put my glasses on so I can make sure I read it right. It would be the commissioner. A. Where is it?
Director of the.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, DM, prosecuting attorney and the county auditor.
Right. And the emergency services director, which is Thurston, which is the Mason County EMS.
I thought that was you.
Well, my title is not that. It it could be that.
Semantics.
Yeah, it could be that, but looking at the law, it's a specific position, so it's not that I couldn't do it, it's that we reached out to those that are defined as doing it for Mason County, that can be shifted based on commission's interest, but they were not forthright in wanting to support a specific board that they would have to attend in person.
Welcome to our world.
Are you saying that the 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 positions of director of emergency management and director of emergency services, we've not had any takers for those positions?
Well, the director of emergency management is you, the director of emergency services has a medical component to it. Because of course injuries, things of that nature, so there's.
Could that be somebody like from the, from the hospital?
It very well could be, I went down with the legal definition, so I got ahold of them. And as long as the board meets, it doesn't have to meet with everybody, of course.
Yeah, until there's a claim.
Until there's a claim.
Wow.
And I'm not saying they won't meet, it's just that Dr. Hoffman, who is their medical director, which is part of that EMS piece, of course, works at the hospital, so.
So do you wanna hold off on putting this on an agenda until we figure out who the board members will be?
I would prefer if we could to move forward with it and let them know that it's been approved by the board and let them work through who that's going to be, and if they don't wanna sit on it, then I'll find somebody to fill that.
You do have a few claims that are awaiting.
Yes.
So it's not a wait and see. Gotcha.
It's not a wait and see, uh, we have some claims that we need to address, and so this board needs to be set up.
So it says here we have the authority to set it up and to do it at the commission, but the commissioner was asking you about titles and stuff. Why isn't there something, again, that you would just take on as a title, that you would do?
I can, I just have never been appointed as that, when you look at my job description, it doesn't say anything about emergency services, so. When you look at Thurston County's definition, emergency services is their director that has emergency management, EMS. Uh, so it's a specific position that other counties have a director for, we just don't have that position because our EMS is ran differently, Thurston County's is, uh, medic one is run separately, so.
Wonder, Mary, if you could take a look at the job description for their.
Well, also, we have an administrator that could, that goes over the top of every single thing of that we have, so we could just say that that is our appointment, or we could just say that's the appointment, just make it happen.
We can.
Yeah, the, the only thing that's missing here that would be a game changer that could simplify this is is the word designated.
Or designee?
Yeah. That's a game changer, with that, we add that into there, that makes it.
Get that out.
Done, so.
Can you make that change, John?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so so administrator or designee, and that covers that.
So that would be four, one. Yeah. Okay. I like it.
And then I submitted that, I don't think I'm scheduled to talk today on the health hazards for their rubber mulch.
Let's wait until Pat gets back, if you don't.
No worries, nope, I just wanted to make sure that.
We're not moving forward with it, we're waiting.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Anything else?
Yeah. No.
Yeah. I was gonna say, wait a second.
What are we doing, we're going, we're not going? It's like I'm Rocky.
Well, I was gonna, I I let the commissioners know, but to let the rest of the county and then if you're watching this, know that I will be attending the county administrators conference over in Wenatchee Wednesday, Thursday and Friday this week.
And you get so much good information from there.
It is a good, it is a very good workshop, yeah.
And being able to just brainstorm with with other administrators is invaluable.
Works out very nicely.
Cool. Wow, look at this.
It's a party.
Really?
It's like, it's like we mean business, yeah.
I brought the party.
That's right, I know, now I can see it up close. Very springy, but I like pace. All righty.
All right, well, we have three action items for you, this morning commissioners, the first up is a delegation of signatory authority that Richard is asking.
Asking for Ralph, Ralph has made it through his six-month probation beautifully and since he's made that, I'd like to have him have signatory authority for the facilities he's responsible for.
You don't wanna buy, advise, consent to you or anything, just literally just straight to him?
Yeah, 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 exactly, I I'll be able to, Loretta also, we'll still remain. Yeah, 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 exactly, I, I'll be able to, Loretta also will still remain signatory.
Access, but it's still, if it's still required, then it goes through you before they sign. I'm, the more people you have assigned, if it doesn't move up, bad things happen, that's all I'm saying, I, I'm not against this, I'd, I'd, I'd be okay with it, but. It sure makes sense to me when there has to be some type of advice and consent of the ones that are up above. Cuz remember, it's not just gonna be for him, it's whoever we set in the future too, so this is gonna be our precedence.
It is the normal check and balance, so when that position is and has been filled, that is the responsibility that's written in the position description.
It is written in there that they are to.
Yep.
To you first, okay.
Yep.
That was, would be my question then.
Um, and then next up, Lovejoy has a road vacation.
Road vacation number four two four is to vacate all that portion of the under the road adjacent to track twenty-nine of Skookum Point, Skookum Point tracks. This plaque was done after the nineteen oh four. So it's actually dedicated nineteen forty-seven, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Wessels have petition for it. Uh, this one is a little more unique, it has a shop in the middle of the road. So this plaque itself was kind of odd that it had that little stretch of road there to begin with, cuz it didn't go anywhere. And the other portions adjacent to it have already been vacated. The, it's a class A, square footage is four thousand. Being seventy-seven cents a square foot, compensation will be one thousand five hundred and forty dollars even. We deemed it not necessary for the use of the county road system. They benefit from it being vacated to clear title, obviously since the shop is sitting on it. And we'd like to see if you could recommend to approve and execute the resolution to set a hearing date for Wednesday, May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
I just wanna clarify something, what, and I've had the same conversation over the years before you ever got here. The term, uh, that you use that, uh, is not necessary, is not the term that we should be discussing, is whether there are any future uses of it. Any other reasons that we might use it in the future and stuff, not does it suit us now, that's the different question.
In here as well, it states that it's not.
Cuz that's the question I, I want to hear is that. That we are, we have no intention, we don't wanna use it, it will not benefit us in the future. Cuz other than that, we keep if it has benefit to us in the future.
Yeah, it's number three, proposed vacation area is not deemed necessary for future use for the county road system.
With the shop on it.
Yeah, but for me, it's also not necessary, that's what I'm saying, is the desire, or we cannot foresee any future benefit from it. That's what I'm looking for when we surplus property. But I'm okay with it, although they've already built on it, and I think they should pay for that, but that's me, I don't know who they are enough. They got a full building on that prob, parcel.
Maybe we could store some stuff in it.
Yeah, no, so, um, to schedule it for a hearing, right?
Yeah, May twenty-eight.
Sounds good, yes.
Next up, I go away for a week and Mike's building million-dollar roads, what the heck?
With a smile on his face.
I know, I know, congratulations.
I mentioned last week about having this project, uh, old Olympic Highway, mile plus one point five to two point eight nine. Already designed and all ready to go out to bid, and, and the board seemed to think that was a pretty good idea, and, uh. Suggested maybe we would use the new road fund money, uh, for that, for just a million of it, not the forty thousand. And, uh, and so here we are presenting it to the creative CRP to do just that.
I'd like to ask that we hold off, the reason why I'll be asked that is I'd like for Pat to be here, this is his, his district, uh. Although I'm sure we, we already bounced it off, but I just think it would be more appropriate if the person of the district was here to okay it, what do you think?
Yeah, I think he was pretty excited about it, um.
It's going, weren't you?
Yeah, yeah, um, let's see, when do you need, when do you need notice, or when do you need to know for sure on this one?
Well, we started digging today. We're just doing shoulder prep work with our own crews, that's what we usually do with these projects, is do the dirt work ourselves ahead of time, so it's just a paver. And it's less complications or places for, um, uh, overruns and stuff, so we're, we're fine, and if you wanna wait a week or two or whatnot, it, it, it's fine. If we get it out by the end of month, that's what we're looking for.
What if you just reach out to him to confirm, because I think it's a great idea, and I'm not, I'm comfortable moving forward, but what if you. Reach out to him, and then he can.
We can also just let it be known that there's, we want a space on the agenda, but it'll be briefed on Monday while he's here, and then he'll agree to help run the agenda.
That, that's exactly what I was gonna say, so let's go ahead and schedule it for the resolution to be passed on Tuesday, McKenzie. So we can put that on the agenda, and then, um, Mike can come back on Monday and brief Pat on it, and if Pat has a concern about it, we could always pull it out.
That's right, we can pull it out. It's a good project, that, that road is, you know.
Great project.
It's, uh, you know, nineteen seventeen when that was constructed with the Kennedy Creek Bridge and stuff there. And so it's concrete panels that are only nine feet wide for a lane, and so it's, uh, it's, it's ready for.
Yeah, as far as what the project.
Where, where exactly it's at, and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think that was one of the maps in there, do you mean something?
I'd like to have an actual aerial of it. So, cuz remember, I'm saying that, uh, just people that were asked for me, I didn't know.
It's from, it's State Route one oh one to Bloomfield. And we'll get you a map.
Tell him to go for a ride.
That kinda ride? Yeah.
It's got, it's got a rhythm.
Uh-huh. Uh, along those lines, also, we, um, received an email from FARA, P R T P O. Um, introducing Squawson's new traffic transportation engineer. And, um, the fact that they're moving forward on the intersection design for the two on and off ramps there. Off of, at one oh eight, so wanting to make introductions and, and start talking about next steps of. Design work out there, so if, if that's of interest, um, as it moves along, commissioners, let us know. We can certainly provide updates, or, or have the tribe come in and provide some updates.
Be nice to them.
But yeah, that'll be exciting also. Yes, things happening out there. Yeah. That's all we had for action items, and then, um, some follow-up. I think we still need to work on scheduling the tour.
For the treatment plan.
Yes, yeah, and then, um, I did reach out to June Williams about the, the road trip. And so she's looking forward to sometime the end of April to do that, and then, um. Put together a story a week ahead of Public Works Week, so kind of a kickoff for National Public Works Week.
I like that.
Anything new on the lights, crosswalks, anything?
Uh, from last week, uh, uh, up at one oh six in Union, we're gonna be meeting with the, uh. Diane Tims about her specific concerns, and make sure we don't assume one thing and they wanted another, so we're gonna, we're setting up a meeting for that. Uh, we've reached out to Sarah Ott for three oh two, um, and, and just to clarify that, we're talking about the, the, the last corner. Down there at the end of three oh two, before you get into Pierce County?
It's a straightaway, I'll, I'll get you an overview. Yeah, it's at the end of the, the, the straightaway, I guess. Over and over and over, I guess it happened again just the other day again. It's like it's the craziest thing you ever saw.
Cuz that, that corner is actually posted for thirty mile an hour, guns are shed around.
Doesn't seem that bad, but it seems bad enough, but that's why flashing lights, something that's gonna make a difference, we could give it a shot, you only do so much, but. As we said, we can't legislate stupid, it's just the way it is.
If the sheriff's office could fit their board up there, their, their radar.
And we, we've done it in the past, actually, I, I try to remember, yeah, but we only do what is it, a couple weeks at a time, and then. It's just people that are just losing their stuff, and it's, doesn't even have to be icy or nothing, that's the weirdest part about that.
It's the usual stuff.
The last one caught real air, got all the way up to their septic tank and everything. Yeah, uh, and left it there, uh, and got hit with, uh, leaving the scene of an accident and stuff. And, uh, he said it was just so late, didn't wanna wake anybody up. That was the excuse, but if we could, you know, continue to look at that, uh, I don't know what to do on that other one, though, I thought about it more and more. The one on Spencer Lake, cuz no matter what you do, and I, it almost seems it's counterintuitive to put some type of thing out there that's gonna. Be a possibility of somebody crashing into it, it just seems counterintuitive, and I don't know how to do that, so. I don't know, I'll, I'll share my opinion with the person that was asking about it and everything, uh, but I'm just speaking for myself, I don't know of the other commissioners. Cuz they were all interested, and they all know the, the tavern, and they all know that crosswalk. But for myself, I've been stuck on that, cuz I went up either and I drove it, I don't see a simple solution, no matter what you do. Except for to put something there that could actually cause damage, if somebody decides to go around the side and boom, or take away a space, that's not exactly good either. They need their business, they use every one of those spaces up front, so I don't know what the answer is, dang it.
I don't think there's an easy one.
Well, we could put a culvert in the road and build a road over it, and.
A walk-through, oh, now we're talking, how about just a bridge, a pedestrian bridge?
Yeah, put, put an animal crossing there, taking footsteps.
We have a culvert walk-through on Sand Hill.
Yes, and that would be so cool.
It does work.
There's a few Olympian people living in them, so.
Right, I miss that too.
Yeah.
June sixth, the other thing, commissioners, um, the Republican women asked that we do a, or have a tip cap presentation. On June sixth at Wild Irish, so just wanted to.
Well, as long as you're the guys that are the ones doing it, stuff like that, we don't put ourselves at risk, that's the only thing I care about.
And I usually go to those, so.
Mitigate the risk.
So you can keep in mind.
I do a lot.
Barbet, alright, that's about all I have.
I've had, uh, community members reaching out, for some reason right now, uh, the, the trash signs on the side of the road seem to be a big issue, I know that's not our barbecue, uh. But can you look and see, uh, I guess we used to have quite a few, you know, do not litter in the fine signs, and they're just not there anymore. I don't know that that's accurate, I'm just saying that's what they're saying, cuz it's not a sign I looked for all those years ago up there. What is the find now? Is it two fifty or something in Washington?
I think it was two, two hundred and fifty, it was, I don't know if it.
Cuz I'd still like to see, to look at what that would be to change that in Mason County, to raise it, when you go, uh, more restricted, which is not less. The problem is, people think, for those that are online, people think people are throwing stuff out of their windows, majority of the time, it's not what it is. They're taking trash to the dump, it flies out, uh, they have a truck and it flies out, uh, it's not people just. I'm sure there's some, but it's not people just throwing stuff out the window, it's just.
Or ask the people living on the side of the road.
Yeah, that, well, that, yeah, that's a whole different animal, but again, if we raise that, then maybe someone gets done about it, because they find.
That was when I did attend the sheriff's breakfast a couple months ago, I believe it was, that was one of the things that was brought up at that. Meeting as well, but how about more signage about do not litter, and I know at one time, we had these custom signs, there was this little. Bumblebee, do you remember that? It was. Some little bumblebee and no littering, I mean, we had this.
Okay, I do remember that.
Yeah, it must have been, I, I'm thinking of solid waste ground or something at one point.
Don't count on any of those coming soon.
Your base fines a hundred and twenty-five bucks, and if you're on a state highway, there's an additional ninety-three dollars, so it'd be two hundred and eighteen.
Yeah, I remember.
Good job. Yeah, yeah, let's look at it.
Unsecured load, though, that's five thousand.
Or, or also maybe it would be used in some, because the city used opposite, some of the same concepts that it's talking about, but hopefully we'll look at some of that in the future. This is one good one to start with.
Alright, any other items for us, commissioners?
Nope, it's springtime, I need another road trip.
Alright, we've got some road trip action.
Going to a recycling center.
Yeah.
Are we doing on our Sheldon, is it Sheldon round?
Uh, we're just waiting for the weather.
Okay.
So it'll probably be June soonst.
Okay.
And you'll move, move in there, gravel it up, and then shoot it.
At least it's not snowing.
April showers.
I came from snow. It was, it was still snowing where I was.
I thought that I would just update you on some of the stuff going on at the, at the legislature, you really want this? Oh, yeah, 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 alright, so. Um, one thing that really concerned me, um. One of our commissioners, she's on the DNR board, and she is very concerned, because DNR is diversifying. And they have been for a while, they're purchasing commercial property, which removes them from the tax rule. And so that's gonna hurt counties and cities by them doing that.
I wonder why they're doing that, where are they getting the money? See, we do something like that, we do something like that for the Hood County Corning Council and stuff like that, they take some of these monies and they buy it to put things in, but they buy it in an arms length transaction. If they're doing large squats of land.
They're purchasing buildings, like old Safeways, old grocery stores, and things like that. Yeah, they've been doing this for a while, and it's one thing that I really had on my radar for probably five years or so. And I've asked DNR to justify it, and they said that they need to, so what concerns me about them doing this is. They're using this money so that they don't have to cut trees. And that's just me thinking outside the box, but it's pretty close to what's happening. Yeah, because they're, they're not harvesting trees. So they have to diversify to make up for the money that they're not making, but DNR is Department of Natural Resources, right? It just goes against everything that I believe in, so anyway, so then moving on, um. I think we briefly talked about the exercise, re one, re two, and how they're kind of looking at changing that one. There's some bills out there for the homelessness point in time, and so that's gonna affect the way that we do it. There's a lot of bills that are gonna really, that affect us, um, K through twelve education funding. Uh, right now, we're, they're at the one percent annual property tax, they're gonna say that. It's not to exceed population growth and inflation with a maximum of three percent annually, so that's another.
I was gonna ask about them, but that's one they're keeping towards the schools then, not for the counties, so we're talking about the counties at one point.
Right, right, one that's, um, Schessler's put a, uh, bill together, it's county board vacancies, just to clarify on the constitution. So it's nothing that will hurt us. And public safety, local sales tax is coming, moving right along rather quickly.
What's that look like?
That is the one that, um, any money that we can raise the tax, and it'll go directly to public safety, and, and not just public safety. But also anything through the judicial, that's judicial.
Calmatic, three, three tenths of one percent, so you don't have to go to the public to vote on it?
Right. Um, one that is kind, that's pretty scary to me, is, um, collective bargaining with the use of AI, so that's gonna go into our. Our negotiations, um, I'm going through it kinda quickly, but, uh, fifty-eight oh four. Hate this one, absolutely hate this one, this is fish habitat restoration, so the public works is assistance account, they're gonna take the money from that. And put it towards fish habitat restoration, but only on state funded, or state highways.
And then what's the five billion dollar, or, yeah, there's a five billion dollar debt issuance or something, what was that?
Five billion dollar debt.
Isn't that part of that? I, I watched the.
On the fifty-eight oh four?
Fifty-eight oh four, yeah. There's like a backfill to the public works account with a, with a debt issuance and then.
With the bonds.
Both bonds, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So they're talking about doing that too. Yes. And then one that we also need to watch is eleven eighty-three. Um, it's off-street parking. The city needs to watch it more than we do.
What are they doing on that?
Restricting, it's gonna further restrict building.
So are they saying, because one of the things they were looking at doing was to allow for exemptions. So my question is, are they looking at exemptions or are they looking at requiring more parking?
So what they're looking at is, it's, it's, there are allowances for setback and height requirements for certain buildings. Allowance for height requirements for solar panels. Prohibit on facade and upper setback requirements for certain housing types, prohibition on requiring off-street parking for several housing types.
They're doing that. Well, I gotta get that one.
On unit size requirements for certain housing types beyond, yeah, the realtors should be.
I sent that to you, Randy.
Okay, because I've, that, I gotta see what the sauce is in that.
You should write down the bill number. What was it?
Eleven eighty-three. And then also take a look at fifty-one eighty-four, which kind of goes hand in hand with that one.
Yeah, there was something, I read through some of them. They were talking about, you have to have access, access to transit within a certain distance.
Right.
And if you don't, then, then there's additional parking spaces, I think.
Right.
Well, and that could be an actual good thing, but the other part, when you start talking facades and stuff, they're doing building code through legislation. That just scares the hell out of me.
As we should be concerned, yeah.
Talk about the wrong people doing, putting forth the wrong stuff. What makes somebody do that? It's usually somebody's cousin that has a certain type of manufacturing product or some weird thing like that.
And then, um, there's another bill, solid waste handling that, um, we're concerned about. That's eleven fifty-four. Um, what it does, it, it duplicates oversight with ecology. So ecology and governments have to agree on something before the solid waste, before it can happen with solid, uh.
Before we can go after somebody or before they can?
It's ensuring environmental and public health protection from solid waste handling facility operations. So ecology, which they, which they do now, but they have oversight. So it duplicates the oversight. And I don't know about you, but ecology has.
It, it could be good if, if, well, no, it could be good if, if they have to agree and if they don't agree, nothing happens. I doubt if that's the way it's written, but I'm just saying that it could be.
And then another one that's very concerning for me is, is, uh, fifty-two ninety-six, it's juvenile offenses. So this could be a huge cost to the county. Improving outcomes for individuals, edu-, um, edu-, edu-, well, anyway, juvenile offenses adjudicated. Thank you. Juvenile offenses by increasing opportunities for community placement options and refining procedural requirements. So just a few bills.
It would require our juvenile detention facility to have much more service.
Right.
So right now, we provide schooling, but I think it also would also require us to provide some of the same levels of service that they're at the state juvenile facilities.
Yeah, yeah.
Which concerns us because then they don't accept our juveniles at state facility and tell them to keep them here at the county.
Right, right. And then there was a letter sent to, um, all the senate and house leadership regarding the policy proposals, um, for a lot of things that are going to cost the county's money, a lot of money. Fifty-two ninety-six, that's what we just talked about. Says likely millions in new county costs. Well, there's, there's, there's quite a few on here. I won't go through all of them because we do have something that we need to get onto real quick. But anyway, so if you'd like a copy of this.
I sent the, I sent the update that Deb sent us on Saturday. I sent it to both Pat and Randy.
Okay. Yeah.
Separately.
And I think I gave you a copy of this, so maybe if you could.
I plan on bringing that with me to, uh, my county administrator.
Oh, good, good. But maybe have Chris scan it and then send it to these guys.
Sure.
And on, I was gonna bring this up also, on days where we go past noon, maybe we should schedule a break. For those of us that need a break.
Madam Chair, I believe it's within your authority as chair to say, we'll take a five-minute break. I do, we've done it before and I think that's, has precedents.
Yeah, yeah, I think that we should do it. We'll bring it back.
I think the way I always did it was unless somebody objects. But you can tell when they're squirming from side to side in the seat.
Or you can hear their stomachs.
Yeah.
It's like, alright, somebody leaves a snack. Do you want a copy of this?
I heard a tip there. Madam Chair, I am moved we adjourned.
Alright, we're adjourned.
So I got Monty at twelve-thirty, I think.